Good evening. I'm Michael Popa, Executive Director of Mainstream Coalition, and happy National Voter Registration Day. Thank you for joining this candidate forum co-presented by the League of Women Voters of Johnson County, Mainstream Coalition, Advocacy and Awareness Group of Johnson County, Climate Action KC, Mid-America LGBT Chamber, and the Northeast Johnson County Chamber. We're offering closed caption service this evening through a third-party provider. If time permits, you can see that on your screen. If you don't see that on your screen, click the closed caption button at the bottom of your Zoom screen and just click "Show Subtitles." Also, if time permits this evening, we'll be taking questions from you, so please use the Q&amp;A feature also located at the bottom of your Zoom screen. Tonight, we'll be hearing from four candidates running for Blue Valley School District Board of Education. Please note that all five active candidates on the November 2nd ballot were invited to participate. Candidates will have two minutes to answer each question. We will monitor the time remaining for each question and will provide a countdown in chat at 1 minute, 30 seconds, 10 seconds, and time. If a candidate continues after time, our moderator will thank them and move on to the next question. You can find a link to the full forum guidelines in the chat. The partner organizations cosponsoring this forum believe that democracy works best when citizens are informed and active, and we hope this forum provides you the opportunity to learn more about your candidates and make an informed decision when casting your vote. And now, I'd like to welcome our moderator this evening, Dr. Liz Meidel, member of the Mainstream Coalition Board of Directors.
Thank you, Michael. I'm grateful for the chance to be the moderator for this important discussion tonight. We're going to start off right out of the gate with the first question, and I'll take turns calling on our individual panelists to respond to this question, and they'll join me on the screen as they answer. Our first question tonight is what would be your top priorities as a member of the Blue Valley School Board? And I'm going to invite Gina Knapp to answer first.
Thank you, Liz, and thank you for having us tonight. We really appreciate the opportunity to get to speak to the voters in a safe, inclusive environment. So my top priorities, if elected to the school board, would be, first of all, supporting the student, teacher, and staff mental health and wellness. We all know that coming out of the pandemic that there's a lot of additional mental health issues that we're encountering, and continuing to support our kids, administrators, teachers, and families is really important to me. Recovering from pandemic learning loss is a focus that we'll need to be looking at for the next couple of years. And then also safeguarding Blue Valley's position as a leader in educational excellence. We all know that Blue Valley was just named the top school district in Kansas, and all five of our high schools, our middle schools and elementary schools were all ranked in the top also for, from niche. And as we continue to reimagine learning, as our district's mission describes, I think that to safeguard our excellence in the community, we can do things like looking at special education and reviewing how we do that in the ways similar that we've done our middle school review and high school, the current high school review that we're doing. I currently have three kids in the Blue Valley School District. My oldest has special needs, and we've been through the special education ringer through the years, and so that's a personal passion and focus area for me.
Thank you so much, Gina. And I'm going to invite Jim McMullin to join us next and to respond to the same question. What would be your top priorities as a member of the Blue Valley School Board?
Thanks very much for hosting this, Mainstream Coalition and the other parties. My name is Jim McMullin, lifelong Kansas Cityan and have lived here in the Blue Valley area for about 20 years since my wife and I moved back from Texas after a brief stint there. My top priority, and one that I've tried to talk to virtually every voter about when I've had the opportunity to interact over the last couple of months, is to really emphasize that the district needs to embrace a language-rich curriculum that includes explicit and intensive reading, writing, public speaking, instruction in an interdisciplinary manner. And really, I view that as a critical, you know, a critical shift from the way we do things, which is very compartmentalized in terms of academic discipline. Why do I, you know, why do I think that? Well, as a society, and this isn't a criticism of Blue Valley, this is an observation of where we are as a culture. In the last 15 years, really since the issuance of the very first iPhone, we've seen a massive shift in the way our children learn, the way they consume information, the way they obtain information. They text a lot, and as soon as they get those phones, usually at a pretty young age, they stop, you know, they stop reading and writing in depth. And so we rely quite a bit on our schools to do that. So I'd really like this to be an open conversation for our, for our board to see how we can.
Thank you so much. We appreciate that opening statement. I'm going to ask Andrew Vanderlon to respond to the same question. What would be your top priorities as a member of the Blue Valley School Board?
Hi, everyone. I'm Andrew Vanderlon, and I'm running for seat number four on the Blue Valley Board of Education. I'm a Kansasian by choice. My wife and I moved our family here expressly for the excellent public schools that Gina talked about. And I just want to take a moment to say thanks to Dr. Meidel, Mr. Papa, Mainstream Coalition, Legal Women Voters, and all the other sponsoring organizations for this important opportunity to have a conversation directly with voters, pardon me. You know, in my corporate career and in my volunteer service, whenever I think about priorities, I tend to think about what are the opportunities, things that we're doing well that we can capitalize on, and what are the challenges and the places we need to improve? So on the challenges side of that ledger, I would say it's the recovery from the pandemic. It's both the learning loss as well as just the simple grace of putting kids back in the classroom. I know my fourth grader has gotten used to unlimited bathroom breaks, water stops whenever he wants, and going to school in his PJs. So mainstreaming him again is going to take a little bit of work for his classroom teacher. I also think the mental health piece that Gina discussed is crucially important, particularly partnering with other organizations like Johnson County Mental Health, Sources of Strength, Zero Reasons Why, these other organizations that are doing such great work. And finally, the third challenge that I really think the district has faced since well before the pandemic is communication. I do not think that the district does enough proactive communication to talk about programs, services, strategic vision, how tax money is being spent, how bond money is being spent, and I think that could be improved. On the opportunities side of the ledger, there are two particular things I want to talk about. One is experiential learning, the power of that hands-on opportunity for something to really click and giving kids those opportunities across all sorts of subjects and disciplines. And then, of course, we can have the most beautiful buildings in the world, but without excellent teachers, without recruiting, retaining, training excellent teachers, no instruction is going to happen in this district. So those would be my five areas.
Thank you, sir. And next, I'm going to invite Lindsay Weiss to join us and to respond to the same question. What would be your top priorities as a member of the Blue Valley School Board?
Thank you. I think, hello, everyone. I'm actually going to start with an apology this evening. I am finishing a horrible cold, and so I have a scratchy voice and this stuff, you know. I know I sound awful. Bear with me tonight. Thank you for having me. I really didn't want to miss this opportunity, but also not feeling the best. Thanks to Mainstream and Partners for having us as well. This is so important. By way of quick introduction, I'm Lindsay. I am the mom of three Blue Valley kiddos, one at each level, and an elementary, a middle, and a high schooler. I also own a small business in the Blue Valley area. I have volunteered in and for our schools for over a decade, actually almost 12 years, both in the classroom and at the school and at the district level as well. And I think that's given me great context into what we're doing well, right? And what we can improve upon, and that segues nicely, I think, into my top priorities. I think the first and probably most near term would be identifying and mitigating pandemic learning deficits. And Gina and Andrew, I think, both mentioned this. We are just beginning to get a handle on how far behind our kids are, right? As a result of being in and out of school for 18 months, especially our middle and high school kids. So that would be the first priority. Second would be attracting and retaining the best teachers. I am the daughter of two public school teachers and the sister of a public school teacher. So I truly believe teachers are the secret sauce that makes all school districts great, but particularly Blue Valley. That would be my second. And third is really supporting our strategic plan. This is something we're not talking about a whole lot because there's so much else going on right now, but we've got these great goals in our strategic plan this year that are so important, improving our state assessments by 10 percentage points, reviewing school start and dismissal times, that's huge, reviewing elementary specials programming, reviewing high school experience and curriculum. So I want to support those and make sure we have great stakeholder input into all of them.
Excellent. Thank you. And stay on your toes, Lindsay, because I'm going to start with you this time and ask our second question. In light, this one's a bit longer. In light of the recent discriminatory events in the Kansas City metro area, the petition in the Park Hill School District and the disturbing homecoming proposal, it'll lay this out. Can you please share how you feel about the school district's diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives? And let me take a moment to say that this was a submitted question, and the next couple are submitted questions from your constituents.
Perfect. It's a great question, so thank you for bringing it out for discussion. I think to me, diversity, equity, inclusion, often shortened to DEI, is really simply just about kids feeling safe and included and that they belong in our school community. And that belonging is really key for me. A kiddo who feels welcome and part of something will inevitably be happier, right? And learn better. But what we have heard from our kids overwhelmingly in Blue Valley is that they don't all feel that way. And, you know, stories that they have shared in various listening sessions or on social media even are heartbreaking at times. After the George Floyd shooting, I think over 1,000 current and former students, Blue Valley students responded to our Instagram post detailing some of their experiences in Blue Valley, and they were not good. As you mentioned, a quick look around local news in the past couple of weeks shows a couple of other incidents in nearby districts, right? And indicating we are not alone in Blue Valley. We have to do better. I don't, I don't personally have all the answers because I think with all of the disagreement and strong feelings in this area, the solution has to be collaborative. We have a great board advisory committee made up of students, teachers, board members, administrators, thought leaders, and diversity from our community, and parents from all parts of the district. They have already begun meeting this year to continue work from last year, and I think they will be the leaders on this initiative moving forward. I look forward to supporting it and hopefully being a part of it.
Thank you, Lindsay. And Jim McMullin, I'm going to ask you to answer that same question again. Next, would you like me to reread it, or do you have it?
No, I think I've got it.
Okay.
Well, I mean, I think in terms of the conduct that was identified, I don't think anybody's going to argue that nasty discriminatory conduct is acceptable. It's not. It wasn't acceptable years ago, and it shouldn't be acceptable now. The question around what the DEI or Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee or initiatives inside the district are seeking to accomplish, you know, that I think is a different question. I think those initiatives are off-base, and I have, you know, two primary criticisms. My first criticism is inclusion of the word equity in the title of the initiative. That word is deliberate. It's deliberately there, and, you know, perhaps the question is, is equity intended to mean equality? Because equality is a, well, one, it's a different word, but two, it conveys a different meaning. So in current parlance, equity is, you know, equality of outcomes, not necessarily equal treatment under the law or treating all human beings as equal before God. And so it conveys something quite different in terms of what we're seeking to accomplish through those initiatives, very much focused on people's immutable characteristics as opposed to other individual traits.
I appreciate that, Jim. Thanks. The next person I'm going to invite to respond to that question is Andrew Vanderlon. Would you like me to reread it, or do you have it?
No, Dr. Meidel, I have it. Thank you.
Okay.
For me, what those recent discriminatory events highlight is that, even though I think Jim talks about those actions being unacceptable, that there's a common agreement about that, but it tells me that there isn't always value for the diversity of our community, that there isn't always an interest in equity, and that there isn't always a feeling of inclusion by all parties. And I think that's why the district's DEI initiatives, and particularly the board advisory committee, are so important. I think it says a lot that the board has said, this is not just going to be something that we're going to push down to the buildings, or this is not just going to be someone where we're going to task someone in an office to tackle this problem. They have said that this will rise to the level of a board advisory committee, right? On par with finance and operations, on par with health and well-being. So I think the district is signaling very clearly that this work is important, and I think that's good and that's appropriate. One other thing that I would add is that I think it's really important that we continue to remember that these students are here to learn, and part of learning is making mistakes. And it's so important that I think that these students are corrected, yes, but not shamed, that it becomes an educational opportunity for them, not some sort of public pillorying, because I don't think that's productive or constructive. I think that these are, these can be difficult conversations, these can be hard, but you have to remember that particularly in the context of an educational institution, they are educational opportunities. And that's what I guess I would hope really is the outcome of all of the DEI initiatives, is educational opportunity.
Thank you. Gina, it's your turn now.
Will you read the question one more time?
I sure can. "In light of the recent discriminatory events in the Kansas City metro area, the petition in Park Hill School District and the disturbing homecoming proposal, it'll lay this out. Can you please share how you feel about the school district's diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives?"
Thank you. So I think these two items that just recently happened in the last couple of weeks highlight the extreme need that we have for Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee. Like Lindsay said, we've been doing a lot of work in the community over the past year and a half, listening sessions and hearing how the people in the community feel about what Blue Valley cares for. I don't think that their answer is out there right now. I think that it's going to be a continuous learning process. That's why we're going to have committees at each of the schools. We'll have a safe place for these items to be reported anonymously so that they can be corrected with the students. But like Andrew said, we need to have, make sure that our students feel safe when they go to school and our teachers feel safe. It's one of the, you know, strategies that we have in our strategic plan to ensure that all of our kids feel safe and are included in our environment. I will clarify that there is an intentional difference between equity and equality, and equity being that it's giving everyone the tools to have an opportunity. Everyone is provided with what they need to succeed. So this is different from equality, where everyone is treated the exact same way. So that's why we are intentional in the use of equity, and every DEI committee uses equity for that exact reason.
Thank you, Gina. The next question is also sent in from a constituent, and I'm going to let you know that I'm going to ask Andrew. I'm going to ask you to go first on this one, so keep that in mind as I read. "Can you tell us your understanding of the current efforts to address dyslexia in our school district? And given the fact that there will not be additional state funding to address this problem, how should Blue Valley help further their efforts to assist learners who have dyslexia?"
Sorry, it took me a second to get to the unmute button there.
It happens.
I'm not surprised that this is a listener-selected question, to be honest. Anecdotally, I have not seen data on this, but anecdotally, when I talk to constituents, patrons of the district, dyslexia is one of the places that the district really seems to not be succeeding in their mission to help all kids achieve their potential. And sometimes, parents who have dyslexic kids in the district are the most frustrated, the single most frustrated group I would say that I talk to, again, anecdotally from my experience. I think that both the state and the board have recognized that gap around dyslexia, and so they have changed the reading curriculum this year, and they have expanded the screening for dyslexia because dyslexic kids are really smart, right? And so they're developing coping strategies to get around the screening tests and to manage, to make it work. So I think it's really important that we continue to have instruction that meets their needs, right? That isn't just about sight words, that isn't just about memorization, that breaks it down into phonics, that breaks it down into strategies. And I think it's really important that we continue to identify those kids that need that extra support. And I want to back up for just a second and talk about why this is so crucial. My aunt was a first-grade teacher, and she would not leave me alone until we started working with our kids on reading. And I finally asked her, Aunt Mary, why is this so important to you? And she said, it is because reading is the fundamental skill. No matter what else you want to learn, you will have to do some reading, whether it is art, whether it is math, whether it is science, whether it is baseball, whatever it is, you will need to use reading skills to learn. So I think it's a really, really crucial thing that the district has had a gap on, and I'm really glad to see it's being addressed.
Thank you. Gina, would you like to take that question next?
Absolutely. Thank you. Like Andrew said, I'm not surprised this is a reader question because this has been a topic that's been brought up a lot, right? So what else can we do, right, to help dyslexic students in our district? This one hits really close to home for me because my oldest, though he's not dyslexic, he's hard of hearing, and so reading has always been, learning to read was a huge issue for him as he was denied accommodations. And the frustration that a lot of these parents feel, I have felt laying in bed at night, you know, thinking about how he's going to graduate from high school when he can't even, you know, spell all the sight words that they send him home with at night, and you can't, you know, learn to read, and what about when we are reading to learn? It becomes a whole nother issue. So I was terrified, and I know that there's a lot to be done in special education as a whole, including the dyslexia area. Now, I know that we recently hired a dyslexia coordinator trained in Orton-Gillingham, which is the premier, from my understanding, the curriculum for dyslexia, and it's being trained across the district currently. There's a phonics resource to be implemented at fall, reading screenings more frequently. There's a lot of things going on with our dyslexia task force that is 100% supported by the district. So I know that we're not there yet, and it's so frustrating. This comes back to communication, like Andrew talked about from the district, transparency. I think parents of special education students know as well as are probably better than anyone that communication and transparency are an area for major improvement, and that will help get our students what we need also.
Excellent. Thank you. And Jim, you're next. Would you like me to reread the question? Do you have it?
Yeah, why don't you reread it?
Okay. "Can you tell us your understanding of the current efforts to address dyslexia in our school district? And given the fact that there will not be additional state funding to address this problem, how should Blue Valley help further their efforts to assist learners who have dyslexia?"
Okay. So I do think the shift that Andrew mentioned in terms of the district moving back to a, at least purchasing and implementing, or beginning to implement a phonics-based reading instruction has been in response to really information and pressure brought to life by the Dyslexia Committee, which is, you know, a lot of passionate parents whose kids are struggling to learn to read. But it's also applicable, you know, that methodology for teaching early reading in the kindergarten through third-grade levels is really applicable to all students, not just, not simply dyslexia, but as it specifically relates to addressing the problem of dyslexia, which doesn't end when you're, you know, second or third grade, and can continue, and it can reverberate really throughout your entire schooling. It's my understanding, and I ran into a couple of members of that committee at that listening tour that the Kansas Department of Education did a few weeks ago. And the concern really is not just what is going on at the elementary levels, but at the junior high and senior high levels, where you have kids who are really have significant gaps in their, in their reading, their reading skills. And, you know, that creates a problem because, at least for adults, once you learn to ride a bike, you can't remember when you didn't learn to ride, when you didn't know how to ride a bike. And it can be a little bit the same in terms of reading. So if the expectation is of a science teacher or an English teacher, this kid knows how to read, and they've got gaps in that, but we really don't have yet the support of that junior high and high school level to really augment that. So it's really a critical priority that needs to be implemented immediately.
Thank you, Jim. Lindsay, you're next. Do you want me to re-read your question?
I've got it. Appreciate it, though. And a couple of things. I think it's important to know that Blue Valley kind of began this shift. We're talking about it a lot this year, but the shift from, you know, balanced literacy to structured literacy actually began back in 2018 and then became mandated by the state in 2019. So we were kind of ahead of the game, but certainly had a lot of work to do, so it was good to be ahead of the game. I had a chance to talk with our new dyslexia coordinator last week, and I think she shared sort of some of the things that have already been mentioned, but kind of five things we need to keep our eyes on this year that are new, that should be progressing us pretty rapidly in the right direction. But then, as a board member, this would be something from an oversight perspective we would be keeping our eyes on as well. Five things are the universal screening that somebody mentioned earlier. It's happening at every level this year. I know all three of my kids have had their screeners already. If you're watching, you might ask your kids if they've had theirs. New phonics resource at the elementary level, which is intense. I've got a third grader who has it every day for 30 minutes, and it is definitely hardcore phonics. We've got lots of PL for teachers this year, professional learning for teachers focused on the science of reading PL. So that's happening. A lot of our teachers were brought up on full literacy or balanced literacy, so a lot of the structured literacy stuff is new to them, so they absolutely need this training. It's critical. The hiring of a dyslexia coordinator, that's point number four. And then number five is we have reading specialists in all of our elementaries and middle schools this year for the first time ever as a result of ESSER funding. So people who can really help kids, not just with dyslexia, but with any reading struggles. So keeping our eye on those five things this year, I think, is key to see where, see where it gets us.
Great. Thank you. This next question is about COVID. And Jim, just as a heads up, I'm going to ask you to address it first. The question is, in your opinion, what is the most effective way for ensuring that our children can prioritize their education while also keeping safe from COVID?
Well, I've been so on record, and I've been pretty consistent in disagreeing with the district's and the board's approach on COVID. That dates back to last year when I thought it was a playoff base to go towards a hybrid learning, and it continues this year where we have a mask requirement from kindergarten through 12th grade. So part of that is county imposed, but it's not above the, above the So part of that is county imposed, but it's not above the, above the middle school level. The, and so why is that? Because the, there's an obvious concern about the overall health implications of COVID in our community. And yet, we have a community, Johnson County in particular, that has effectively no mitigation and no other efforts to slow down community spread. You can go to any restaurant in Johnson County, and it is like pre-COVID days. And yet, there's been a decision that says it is appropriate to mask young children who have, some of whom have never experienced schooling without wearing a mask, and taking that decision out of the parent's hands. So I can appreciate that I might view my own child's risk differently than somebody else views their child's risk as it relates to health. Health is not the only consideration when one is talking about a, you know, a relatively significant imposition on a child in terms of learning environment, social, emotional, intellectual, psychological. And I really am a strong advocate for a mask choice for the parents.
Thank you, Jim. Lindsay, you're next on my list for this one. Would you like me to reread the question, or you got it?
I think I've got it, thank you. This one's pretty short and sweet for me. I think we've learned that we have to do whatever it takes to keep kids in school full-time, continuously and uninterrupted, because we know it's the key to their academic growth and their mental health, frankly. I think the most important job a board of education member has is to make sure kids get the best education possible, and they have to be in school to do that. So I will always consider public health recommendations, masking, cleaning, hygiene, air filtration, you know, social distancing, going outside for classes. I will always consider those recommendations that allow us to remain in school. And second to that, that allow kids to participate in sports and do the activities that they love.
Thank you. Gina, I invite you to address this one next.
Thank you. So I think Lindsay pretty well covered it. It's a pretty straightforward answer. Public health expert recommendations are, you know, for me, the obvious way to go to keep our kids in school. My high schooler is really excited for homecoming this weekend. Not only do we get to have bands in the stands for our homecoming game this year, which we didn't get to do last year, which was so disappointing, but we also get to have a homecoming dance, which he didn't get to do last year either. I think all the students will agree in the upper levels that they would rather wear a mask than not get to have things like graduation or their homecoming, or get to play in their state championship games and have their grandparents and friends watch them. So as we're all worried about mental health and physical health, we know that the kids are ready to be with their peers. They learn best with their peers in the classroom, and I support doing what we need to keep them there.
Thank you. Last but not least on this one, Andrew?
Sure, thanks, Dr. Mydell. I think that Lindsay and Gina have pretty well covered what I would have said, much better than I would have said it before. I do think it's really, really important to keep kids in school this year. I know anecdotally, just looking at my own three kids, there was a huge difference between how engaged they are, how excited they are, how enthusiastic they are, what they're getting out of the virtual experience versus the in-person experience. And I think it's particularly important, given that the Kansas State Legislature has set pretty hard caps on how much virtual learning can happen this year, and has actually put in a mechanism that would dramatically reduce per capita funding if we had to go virtual. So there's all sorts of reasons that we have to keep kids in school, in person, consistently this year. I also just want to say that I love the way that this question is worded, that it's not about how can the board prioritize education? It's how can our children prioritize education? And I know that when my kids are at home under my roof during virtual learning, I'm a lot more involved in their education than I would like to be. And I am limiting their growth in all sorts of important ways because they are not as in control. So if we really truly want kids to prioritize their education, we need to keep them in the buildings, we need to do whatever we need to do for mitigation strategies to keep them safe. I have a degree in economics, I'm a finance and operations guy by trade. That is not my area of expertise. So listening to those medical and public health experts is a really important part of the strategy.
Wonderful, thank you. Our next question comes from one of our community partners. And Gina, you're going to, we've rotated back to you, so you're going to start with this one. And the question is, what are your thoughts on parent, community, and student engagement? And what are some ideas that you would like to introduce if you're elected?
Thoughts on parents, student, and community engagement?
And what are some ideas that you would like to introduce?
So at the board level, I'll start there. So I love how involved our students are with the board. They are on, we have students on our DEI committee, we have students on most of our committees as appropriate activities committee and things like that to hear, make sure that their voices are heard. As we're doing the reimagining of high schools and specials, we are talking to the students and engaging them. So I'm really proud of how we engage our students at all levels in our school district. As far as engaging them within the community, the students and the families, we're really lucky in Blue Valley in that we have a lot of organizations like Blue Valley Rec Center and, you know, even the Shields Complex just down the street, where we get to get together as a community often to celebrate the successes of our kids and get together in doing, you know, fun things to build the community. I know that in the campaign, walking around, I've met so many people, and we're really all on the same page in most things. There's not this huge divide that sort of is pushed forth by the media. I think Jim will agree on this, as he's talking to people too, that we really are together as a community and on the same page in a lot of ways. And keeping everybody together and, you know, whoever gets elected to the board, I know that we'll do really well working together without division.
Thank you. I'd like to invite Andrew to answer this question next.
Sure, thanks, Dr. Mydell. I think that when we talk about parents, students, and the community, I think one of those really sticks out for me. I think parents and students are already hearing a fair bit from their building administrators and their teachers, whether it's via Canvas, weekly emails from the principal, whatever that may be. Obviously, there's lots and lots of opportunities to engage those groups. But I'm going to start really quickly with community, because I think it's important to remember that, you know, we have 22,000 students, let's call that roughly 10,000 families. But the population of the Blue Valley School Districts is much larger than that. And the reason that these schools are excellent are because of the property taxes that are paid for by all of the residents of the district. So I really think that the biggest challenge the district faces is communicating with people who are not current patrons. They might be former patrons, they might be future patrons, or maybe they send their kids to parochial and private school. But I still think it's important for them to have a chance to understand how the board and the administration of the district are being good stewards of the resources that we're asking them for. I think a lot of that comes down to communicating as loudly and through as many channels and as frequently as possible. So whether that's through the magazine that may show up in your mailbox, whether that's putting things on the website, whether that's putting it out on social media, whether it's holding more public forums and town halls. We saw the district do some of that after they changed the middle school electives from the well-loved X-Blow Wheel to Middle School Choice. More proactive opportunities like that, because what we've all seen, I think, is that Board of Ed meetings and that public comment period are not great, is not a great mode of communication. So I would say that, particularly to address the community piece. For the parent and student piece, I would love to see us do more to just take all the talents of parents and find great ways to use them.
Thank you. Lindsay?
Yes. So I would say I had a little different take when I first heard you read the question. I would say engagement from all three of those parties is actually at an all-time high right now only because we're so grateful just to be able to be back, to go to band concerts and football games and all the things that we have missed for, you know, a hard year. I know, and I'm in the Southwest feeder, we're having to like, you know, not limit, but make sure, we have so many middle school kids coming to football games, we're having to make sure they're chaperoned. And our fifth graders are having huge tailgates at football. I mean, just community, people are just wanting to celebrate because we haven't been able to do that. So that's a huge opportunity to capitalize, I think, on people who might not have wanted to be a part of things prior to this, or maybe we're too busy. This is a chance to really bring them in. And I know in our feeder, in the Southwest feeder, we have this whole initiative. It's actually four years old, I think, but just as timely, called Five Schools, One Family. And it's our three elementary schools, our middle school, and our high school. And it started as a social media campaign that, just to bring people together for events. And it went crazy pre-COVID. It looked like, you know, the football players and the band coming up to the elementary schools for lunch on Friday and sitting with the kids or being the readers in the classroom. It was our middle schoolers doing a truck retreat for everybody. The whole community was invited. Now, it's everybody at football games, and a bunch of them came to the band showcase the other night. But there's a huge opportunity to take our feeders and really draw everybody in. I'm in a pretty good model that I can't take credit for, I just helped with it. But the Five Schools, One Family is a great thing, I think, we could roll out to our other feeders just to kind of bring everyone into the circle. When people feel like they're part of something, right? We talked about this with DEI. When they feel like they're part of something, everything just gets better.
Wonderful, and Jim?
Thanks. You know, one of the challenges we have as a community is we're a big community, and it stretches along north-south, actually, north-south and east-west, you know. And it's quite a bit different in the north part of the district from the south part of the district. And yet, we have one community. We have differences of opinions. We have one school board, and we have we have some common goals that I think we can all get behind to engage each other. At the, one of the things I noted when COVID happened in last fall in 2020, I mean, and it was, passions got really inflamed because the sports weren't playing and band and other activities weren't playing. And parents got, you know, like motivated and angry like they hadn't in the past. But they were around with activities. Part of that is because those activities are a community within a community. You don't necessarily embrace your entire kid's high school, but if they're on the football team or in the band, embrace that activity. And so, you know, having a community within a community is really critical. And so I do think we have an opportunity coming out of this crazy last couple of years to engage not just parents and kids, but the broader community in activities, because everybody's on a heightened sense of, just, everybody's a little bit on pins and needles to ourselves to reach across our differences and to bring people together in ways that support our children for the future, regardless of what political persuasion we might.
Thank you. This is, we only have time for one more question, some closing statements. So this is going to be our last question. And Lindsay, you're going to get to kick it off. So here it is. This comes from our partner, Climate Action KC. And the question is, many school districts encourage nature-based sustainability solutions ranging from composting in the cafeteria to school gardens, green infrastructure, and even fruit orchards. What sustainability initiatives do you support for the district?
We do compost over here in this neck of the woods, and it was definitely a chore to get kids, especially our elementary kids, to figure out what goes where and in what bin. But if we can teach our kindergartners to do it, which we did do starting two years ago, I think we can teach everybody to do that. So that would be a great one. I think in general, just, a lot of our schools are built around these beautiful courtyards, and we don't always have a ton of funding, and I know we won't get it to make them everything we'd want to be. We can't always have a garden, but there's these beautiful courtyards that our kids can use, just A, to appreciate nature, but B, to learn about it. And I think both of those things lend itself to, you know, eventually improving our world and our land as a whole. But we have these beautiful spaces that we sometimes just forget to use, and they're right there, ready for all the kids. I think if we took advantage of those, that would be a great step forward, too.
Thank you. Jim, I'm going to invite you to go next.
You know, one of the great benefits we have, kind of going back to the point I made earlier in our, in our entire community, is we have both, you know, pretty, you know, long-time suburbs. We also have some rural areas with some pretty great community assets. And, you know, if you live on the south part of the district, you get, you maybe have more, I'd say more opportunity, but it's closer proximity. So you have a greater opportunity to grant some of those, some of those community assets. I think it's especially important, and it goes back to my original point, how in the last 15 years, we've become so, the ecosystem in which our children grow, live in, and the way that we as adults live has changed. We're very much tied to our devices, and we're very much in a, in a in an electronic, media-driven world. And that can disconnect us from, you know, our natural, from our natural state. My dad grew up in Illinois with, on a farm with no plumbing. And we've come quite, quite, you know, my kids have come to quite a bit different life. And I think it's incumbent upon us to encourage all of our children. It could be part of the school activity, or for me, for a long time, it was leading my son's Cub Scout group and the opportunity to go camping with them, et cetera. It's really incumbent upon us to take advantage of those community assets.
Thank you. Andrew, would you like to go next?
Sure. Well, my last job in the corporate world was as the Chief Sustainability Officer for Random House. So I am likely to exceed my time on this question, please feel free to cut me off when it's appropriate. I think it's really important that we think about the sustainability initiatives as something that can be used as educational tools. So when we look at, say, composting at the elementary school, which at our elementary school is something that the PTO has helped to fund, what I love is that the kids are learning in the lunchroom, you know, what goes to compost, what goes to waste. There's posters up that the older kids have made to help kids sort. So they're learning, and then we actually bring that full service and then use, full circle, sorry. And then in the spring, we have a compost sale that comes back from that Missouri Organics compost provider, and the community can use that for their gardens. And so I love seeing that full lifecycle and kids getting that full experience. And I think that that's something that we can do, whether it's the, you know, the school garden or the, you know, greenhouse of Prairie Star or any of those things. I also think it's, it was great to hear recently that we're expanding programs at the Wilderness Science Center to get kids out of the building and go on some nature walks and get them out in the nature. Jim talked a little bit about scouting. I've been a scout master for the last three years, and seeing kids, again, get away from their devices and get out into the world is really, really powerful. One, I think, very specific opportunity for Kansas schools around sustainability is to talk about energy consumption, and particularly to tie that to the booming wind industry in Kansas. I think it's a potential career opportunity for kids. I think it's important to the economy of Kansas. And I think understanding where all this energy consumption comes from, what it gets used for, particularly in this device-heavy world that we live in, is a really interesting and unique opportunity for Kansas students.
You didn't go over. You did great.
I'm still talking in my head, but yes, thank you.
And Gina?
So you're going to make me follow a Chief Sustainability Officer?
I actually didn't know, I'm sorry.
Feel like he should have been like the exclamation point at the end, right? So all I have to say to add to that is, you know, the Wilderness Science Center is So all I have to, to say to add to that is, you know, the Wilderness Science Center is something unique to Blue Valley. And it's really a huge asset for our students. We're really lucky to have it in our community that the kids can go out there and learn about different ecosystems and see it hands-on. And, you know, having a composting program in the district is such a blessing. So we have a lot of opportunity here that a lot of other kids don't get the opportunity to learn about. And as a result, our community, because it comes back to the community, because, you know, the kids are the future of our community. It just increases the environmental awareness of our kids and our community in general, which just makes Blue Valley even better.
Wonderful. I, we don't have enough time for everybody to do two minutes of closing statements. So I'm going to ask my handy friendly timer to take it down to one minute each. And we're going to go around and get, and have everybody have an opportunity to do one minute of closing. And we're going to go in this order. We're going to go Andrew, Gina, Jim, Lindsay. So Andrew, if you'd start, I'd be grateful.
Sure. I actually think it's really great that for the first time in several cycles, all of these seats are contested. I think it's an important opportunity for voters to determine the future of the district. And I will say, whether you're going to vote for me or my opponent, please, 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 please vote.
That was less than a minute. Thank you. Gina, and super in line with mainstream, we really want you to vote too.
Absolutely. And it's National Vote Registration Day, right? So thank you for having us tonight. This is a great forum. There's a lot of really good questions. And I appreciate that Jim was here along with Lindsay and Andrew. It was a good conversation. So I like that we were able to have different perspectives. So really appreciative of that. You know, the mission of Blue Valley is that we're committed to reimagining learning and changing the world. And I think that all of the questions that we discussed tonight really emphasize that. We're really successful in doing that currently, in my opinion. And, you know, we're only going to go up from here. So thanks for having us.
Thank you, Gina. Jim?
Very much. You know, we have a noble mission. And it's why I'm involved in this. And I think probably the others here all believe it's a noble mission as well. That is to, to inspire our children to live rich and full lives. It's not to make them career and college ready. That's an outcome of all of what this is what we're doing. But it's to, to inspire them to live rich and complete lives and to impact their community. So that's why I'm doing this. I hope 10 years from now, I've got some grandchildren in the community, meaning in the, in the schools. If anybody wants to reach me, call me. We'll talk 913-220-1263. My phone is open anytime to talk to any constituent.
Thank you, Jim. Lindsay?
I would say thank you to all of you for this opportunity. And thanks to Jim and Gina and Andrew. It's, this is a, it's a unique experience for all of us. It's, it's always great just to hear great people, great people doing it together. I think I would just close with, you know, we've, we have these great school ratings that came out from niche.com a week or so ago. Blue Valley Best School District in Kansas, Best Teachers in Kansas, Top 100 School District in America. I mean, and there are a few others in there too. Kind of one right after the other. These, these accolades are not an accident. As someone who has volunteered behind the scenes for, you know, almost 12 years, I see how much our district has worked for these, these kinds of honors. And they don't do it for the honors. They do it for the kids. So we still have work to do, sure. But I'm incredibly proud to live here, to send my kids to these schools, to have the honor to run for this board and to serve all of our kids in Blue Valley.
Thank you. Thank you, Lindsay. Thank you all. I enjoyed this opportunity to visit with you. And now I'm going to turn it back over to the executive director of mainstream, Michael Popa.
Thank you, Dr. Mydell. Appreciate you moderating this evening's event and to the candidates for taking the time to share their perspectives with us. I'd also like to recognize one more time the partner organizations who made this forum possible. The League of Women Voters of Johnson County, Mainstream Coalition, Advocacy and Awareness Group of Johnson County, Climate Action KC, Mid-America LGBT Chamber and Northeast Johnson County Chamber. The league and mainstream will be posting recordings of this forum on Facebook and YouTube. So make sure you go out there and view it again and then share it with your network of voters. Remember that the last day to register to vote this year for the November election is October 12th. And then advanced voting begins on October 13th. Election Day, November the 2nd. Before you vote, please visit vote411.org and ksballett.org to read up on all the candidates on your ballot, find your polling location and make a plan to vote. Thank you again for joining. And remember to, as you heard tonight, vote, 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 vote on or before November 2nd. And make sure you get your friends to vote too.